Assessing best practices in policy, prevention and intervention and enforcement due to enforcement to reduce underage drinking and excessive alcohol use. Members of include UW administrators, students, staff, faculty, law enforcement and invested citizens in the Laramie community. Whereas fifty-six percent of all arrests in Albany County are alcohol involved. In twenty-seven percent of those arrests, the last point of conception was a bar. Whereas limiting alcohol sales is considered a best practice to reduce consequences such as DUIs, physical assaults and sexual assaults. Now the quote here, maintaining the limit, maintaining limits on the days in which alcohol assault can effectively reduce alcohol consumption and related harms among the general population. Hundred-and-fifty-three jurisdictions that banned alcohol sales one day of the week saw a general decline in alcohol consumption and related harms, whereas places that increased the days of sales saw an increase. There's also evidence that limiting hours of sales is an effective prevention strategy. A change of more than two hours in any direction is likely to have a measurable effect. And that's from the Maryland Collaborative. Whereas minors allowed to be established and primarily sell alcohol becomes a problem for enforcement of that of the legal age of consumption. And whereas the Laramie community has seen effects of excessive alcohol use, including but not limited to, the loss of two UW students in the last three years and the loss of eight cross-country players in two thousand and one. Whereas the Laramie City Council plays a tremendous role in safety and well-being in Laramie, of the Laramie residents. So be therefore resolved on this day, May fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, that the A-Team Coalition on the University of Wyoming supports the current draft ordinance as presented on May second, two thousand and seventeen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for public comments this evening? Going once. Vice President Blackburn.
Yes, I'll be brief. My name is Sean Blackburn. I'm the Vice President for Student Affairs at the University of Wyoming. And as I said two weeks ago, I urge the council to pass the ordinance as presented and written on May second. This is a public health concern. I've got young people in these establishments all throughout the year. The last thing they need to do is to stay in those establishments past 2:00 AM and continue to get more intoxicated. So I urge you to please pass the ordinance and not amend it that you got presented on May second. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Lena Nuland and I have worked, I'm a resident of Laramie, lived here for twelve years. I have worked in health and wellness, in substance abuse prevention and in general health promotion for the last seventeen years. And I am a parent also and would, I have a master's degree in public health and I really encourage the council to address this issue as a, as a public health concern, as Vice President Blackburn mentioned. We have, our data really shows that we have an alcohol problem in Laramie, in Albany County, and we don't necessarily need to make alcohol more available. And so I urge you, I support what the A-Team resolution is. I urge you, as a parent, as a, as a resident, as a professional in prevention, to pass the ordinance as it was read two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would just speak to this topic this evening? Going once? Twice? All right, that public hearing is closed. Thank you all for coming for the public hearing this evening. Next item on our agenda will be announcements. Staff, we have announcements this evening. There are two announcements. The first is from Parks and Recreation. Patrick Guerin.
Thank you. Just a reminder that this Saturday, we are going to have the inaugural Touch a Truck activity out at the Ison Event Center parking lot. It's going to be from ten till two, and we have about thirty pieces of large equipment of all varieties. We have fire trucks, we have a school bus, we have a Zamboni, all types of equipment that kids and, and adults alike can come out and take a look at, visit with the operators. We'll have trading cards for the first hundred-and-fifty kids that the operators can sign for them. It has the specs on the vehicles and has a nice picture of them. And also we'll have some free T-shirts and free books for the kids. We'll have story time beginning at ten-thirty on the half hour between ten and two. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout and hopefully not too much snow. And if there is a little bit of snow, we will punt and deal with it, but hopefully it'll be, it'll be decent weather for us. So I hope you'll all encourage others to come out and, and visit with us. We hope this will be one of a long series of Touch a Truck events.
If there's snow, do we get rides on the Zamboni?
Oh, we took the ice out, man. I know, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
You could bring out a snowplow, too.
There we go.
I don't think so.
We, we have a lot of vehicles, though. I think we have about thirty pieces of equipment that are going to be out there. So we've got, we've got something for everyone.
Thank you very much.
City manager.
Mayor, the, the second announcement is from the city manager's office, and I wanted to introduce to you tonight a new face in our office. This is Nancy Oakland Potter. She started yesterday as the Executive Assistant in the City Manager's Office, and she and her family are relocating to Laramie from Minnesota. So, you want to say anything?
No. The podium is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. It's a great opportunity that my family are looking forward to. And we've enjoyed visiting here for several years and everybody has been so welcoming, so we can't even tell you how excited we are.
Welcome to the Laramie community. We're excited to have you here.
Okay. Oh, good evening.
Any other announcements?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Next item is disclosures by city council members. Does anyone need to make any disclosures related to conflicts of interest for items this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I will turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor, sticking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
There a second? Second by Counselor Hanson. City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. So we'll move on to the regular agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move for reconsideration of Resolution two thousand and seventeen thirty-two, modifying the number of commission members on the Monolith Ranch Advisory Commission from five to seven.
Counselor second. Second by Counselor Henry. So we will need to do a vote for reconsideration, but before we do that, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Gabriel for an explanation as to the consideration, if you would like. We need to keep discussion amongst council only on the merits of reconsideration right now. Counselor Gabriel?
After voting against this resolution a couple of weeks ago, the next day, I felt that I had, really didn't think this through properly. And so it, it seems to me having an advisory commission of people from Game and Fish and Laramie Conservation District would be a, a good fit for the Laramie City Council. It's an advisory commission, and I was not approached by anybody to reconsider my vote. I just thought that I did not think this through very thoroughly. And so I contacted the mayor and asked her how I might reconsider this, or reconsider my vote on this since it was a four-four vote a couple of weeks ago. So talking to Mayor Somerville, she walked me through the process and told me what I could do at this meeting, and so that's why I'm putting it back on the floor for reconsideration.
All right. Any other council members have any discussion on the merits of reconsideration? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to know whether the specifics of who the two members or where the two members would be coming from is in this motion for an exception.
Counselor, or Hanson, we're going to have to wait for that question until we actually have the main motion back on the floor.
Oh, sure.
So if you can hold your question. Any other discussion, only on the merits of reconsideration? All right, city clerk, this is a simple majority vote. City clerk, can you do roll call on the reconsideration?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion for reconsideration does pass, so I will turn it over to Counselor Gabriel to put the big motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution number two thousand and seventeen dash thirty-two, modifying the number of committee members on the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee from five to seven, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Pierce. City staff.
Honorable Mayor and council, upon reconsideration of this ordinance, it's unchanged. The positions would still come, the two new positions would come from Game and Fish and Laramie Rivers Conservation. There's nothing changed in the motion. I know, I believe there's some people to speak on this tonight. It may be an idea for you to consider postponing this until you have your work session on the ranch and what you've been discussing. That's only an option. What I have brought for you is the creating resolution for the ranch, and I'll hand you each a copy of that, but I'd just like to note that the charge of the committee originally was, number one, to identify and preserve the water rights for municipal operations and recommend cost-effective actions to more efficiently manage the Monolith Ranch. Number two was to gather information and data from advocacy groups and public regarding attitudes and opinions related to grazing operations as they pertain to the protection of Laramie water right for future transfer. Number three was to evaluate current range and habitat conditions on the Monolith Ranch and suggest viable alternatives for better, more holistic operations. Number four was to engage in other specified duties or assignments as directed by city council related to its review of issues such as potential recreational activities, public access, wind farm development, grazing operations and overall management of the Monolith Ranch. As the ranch went from an ad hoc committee to a standing committee, that charge has not changed in the way we've approached it. Changes have been made to the ranch in reducing the size of the committee from nine to seven, then to five. When we went from seven to five, we removed two staff members that were voting members because we felt it was inappropriate. This move was just, in my opinion, it's to allow for some broader base knowledge that could be brought to the table to assist the city and the committee in carrying out the charge that was put forward in the original resolution. And I don't, I would stand for questions.
Questions for city staff on this? Okay?
Actually, I have a question.
Counselor Polikas?
So if I listen to the motion, and by the way, I agree with the fact that, that seven members is a better board than five members. It, it does not specify a direction for those two members. The background information suggests that, but it wouldn't, it's not part of the motion. Am I correct on that?
Assistant City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Polikas, it is in the resolution where it's specified.
Thank you.
And it's specified as also voting members.
Thank you.
With each of those entities appointing someone to the board, not necessarily through a process of council selection of those people, council would acknowledge and approve the entity. The entity would select their member to represent them.
Any other questions for city staff? Thank you. Sorry, Kent Vincent? I apologize. I didn't see you.
I'm still, back to my question, which I asked prematurely. You know, all the commissions that we have, we interview people from the public to become members of these advisory commissions. This is sort of a change from that, in that two sub-organizations, or whatever you want to call them, are automatically appointing two members. And, and that seems to be a change of, well, venue or direction that we have normally for our advisory commissions. And I think our original discussion was that there was really no objection to having seven members to the committee, but I'm a little leery about setting aside two of the positions not to be filled from the citizenship, citizenry in general, but rather from specific groups. And, and that, I think, this is where the conversation hinged on before, and I'm still not comfortable with that particular direction. I think I have no objection to having seven members. That seems to be a, a better way to go. So I don't know. If we could separate this out, I'm perfectly happy to say, let's go to seven members. But I am not happy necessarily in designating specific persons from other commissions to be on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Any other questions for city staff from council members right now? My understanding is we hear somebody here from the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee. I'll invite you up if you'd like to speak. If you could introduce yourself for the record, that would be wonderful, and when you leave, if you can sign the sheet behind the city clerk. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Keith Riddle from the council. Thanks for hearing from us tonight. I'm here to speak partly on behalf of Marius Favre, who's our current chair, as well as Amy Nagler, who is our vice chair, both of whom were out of town this evening. A couple of points they asked me to convey, I think, are to emphasize that it was the group's feeling that the Laramie Rivers Conservation District and the Game and Fish had particular expertise, which was very well suited to the interests of, or the, the issues that the, the ranch committee is, is working, and that from an administrative standpoint, it's really just more efficient that those organizations, which are really not, they don't necessarily have a horse in the race so much as they just have expertise in range management and, you know, game with the hunter management area that's part of it, you know, ag practices. And they're, they're professionals that have, you know, limited time, but if the organization is specifically designated to a point that they're able to have those people come and join the group on a regular basis, you know, frankly, in the course of doing their duties. So as a volun, as an all-volunteer group, you know, it can be tough to keep a quorum, and so having a couple professionals will help in that regard. But I, and I also think it's, you know, best to leave it to, to those organizations to identify who's best suited from their organization, to support the needs of the group. So the one other, I think, key point in all this that we wanted to, or well, that I would follow on to that is that, sorry, lost my train of thought there. Okay, yeah, no, those were the key points. So, you know, we, we have a lot of issues to work through moving forward, as I understand we'll be discussing at a future date, in terms of, you know, where, where that ranch goes, in terms of the property versus the water rights. And I guess I would just, you know, close in emphasizing that the two individuals in particular that are at present representing the Game and Fish and the Laramie Rivers Conservation District are particularly, you know, knowledgeable in the history of the ranch and really add a lot to the discussion. So the, you know, the, the trick with throwing it open to a public process is that they don't necessarily end up being represented. And so having two of those seven seats doesn't really stack the deck in any way, because you still have five seats that are open for representation from the public, and it's a non, a non, you know, it's just an advisory committee to begin with. So it doesn't really bind anyone's hands in terms of what those individual organizations can add to the, add to the table. So those were my thoughts. Thanks for hearing from us.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public that would like to provide any public comment on this topic tonight? Okay. Counsel, discussion. Counselor Henry.
I would like to also point out, I've got a letter here from Marius Favre, and one thing that he says is that the participation of the Laramie Rivers Conservation District provides expertise on water conservation, I think this is kind of what Keith said, irrigation, pasturage and grazing, and can provide assistance for grants to improve the ranch. Participation of Wyoming Game and Fish not only facilitates public access and recreational use of the ranch, but can also work on improvements to the ranch's biodiversity and also can support possible grants. So I just wanted to point out that those two entities are, they're kind of like on the opposite, opposite ends of the scale.
Okay. Counselor Hanson, did you have a name?
Yes. I'll come back to the, to an analogous discussion that I think I made before. I serve on the traffic commission. The traffic engineer, who is very much a person, a specialist about traffic issues, comes to the traffic commission, you present to the traffic commission, but that person is not a member of the traffic commission. The traffic commission is a citizens' commission that makes decisions after it has heard from the specialists. And this is the point that I'm trying to make here. If we take these two organizations and let them have a specific member, voting member on the commission, I find that just giving the commission a certain direction where the influence of two commissions, two outside commissions, becomes very much stronger than anybody else's influence onto that commission. So that's where I object to it. I have nothing against seven members, and if they want to be advisory without a vote, that's perfectly fine with me. But I don't find this way of going the right direction in weighting two outside commissions more heavily as far as participation in this commission is concerned. Thank you.
Other discussion? Vice Mayor?
So I really appreciate Keith for coming down and sharing his, his views with us. I fully support this, this reintroduction and, and as you all know, this, this amendment or this, this particular issue. I think my other comment is I think Counselor Hanson makes some interesting and valid points regarding the level of professionalism or folks that we like to try to get on our, our committees, if I can, if I can say that. And I think when I was the liaison to the traffic commission, even though one of the members was a member of the public, we were thrilled to have a UW traffic engineer on the committee. And I think in the general sense of the word, I think, I think we try really hard, based on the type of committee, to get professionals on that committee. And I know with our, what is it, the health, health?
Board of Health.
Board of Health. We have to have dentists, doctor, and, you know, a few other folks. So it's not like it's a new precedence, precedence, and it's not like we don't try in other committees to get the professionals on that committee. I think this is actually a, a good step in the right direction to, to ask the folks, and maybe we should think about this more broadly for all our committees, because, because we do search out some very key folks that have particular skills based on the type of committee that it is. So I would, I would really generally encourage us to think about it, and I think we have done it and do it already. And I, I think we need to really seriously consider this, and I, and I fully support this, this, this amendment.
Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also support having seven members on the committee, however. I, I think, you know, the, the process has been one where it's common for us to open it up for anyone that would come and ask, you know, to be considered for a board, and then we take applicants and then bring them forward to the council for approval. I believe the council would probably approve recommendations of both the Fish and Game and also the Laramie Rivers Conservation District if they were the applicants that came forward. However, I don't want to make that to where there is a specific slot for certain individuals. If, if so, I would like to also, you know, suggest that we should have an attorney in water law. We should have someone that's expert in water and land management. We should also have someone that has background and, and abilities in ranching. But we don't designate those. We just simply say, let's take the best applicants we can that fit our model that we're trying to bring forward to manage the Monolith Ranch. So I'm going to vote no as it's presented right now. However, if there is a motion to add it to seven members, it has my wholehearted support.
Counselor Polikas?
A lot of what's been said concerning the Game and Fish and the Laramie Rivers Conservation District on the board, I agree with, as far as the reasons not to have them on. I think we're losing, first of all, we have made a commitment to do a master plan or to do a, a long-range plan for this ranch. We don't have it yet. As, as it stands now, the priority for that ranch and the only priority for that ranch is to enhance the water usage on that ranch so that we can protect our water rights and also expand our water rights. The second priority, which relates to the first, is to, the way to do that is to have an active ranch on that property in partnership with us to do that. That's it. That's what the ranch is designated at this point in time. As a matter of fact, the total ranch is leased out for the next seven years to, I believe, Mr. Bar, Stanley Bar, for him to run his ranching operation. The ranch is not open to the public. It's leased out to a rancher and it's his property for the next seven years. He would, by the way, would love to see that extension go for another fifteen years. A lot of the stuff we're talking about right now, it may come into play sometime down the road. Number one, that's what our, that's what our long-range plan, I hope, identifies. I hope we have a timeline as to when we're going to, when we're going to use those water rights, when perhaps we don't need a ranching operation on that, on, on that property and so forth and so on. But until we, number one, create the plan, and number two, implement the plan to designate people such as the Game and Fish or the Conservation District, that they must be part of the process, I just think we've got the cart before the horse. I think we need to figure out what the plan is first and then designate people. The other issue I have with this is the Game and Fish is extremely valuable for any property and anybody in rural Wyoming, and to have them as partners goes without saying. I, I mean, we need organizations like that as partners, but as Counselor Shumway said, we also need advice on that ranch from an attorney. And by the way, our attorney that we relied on to develop the ranching plan came before us and said, and, and the reason she came before us is because it was the discussion as to what we should be using the ranch for, and should we have more recreation on the ranch, and so forth and so on. And she stood before us and said, you are doing the right thing. You're providing, you're providing an enhancement of the water rights, you're, you're leasing it out to a rancher that's helping you out. Don't vary from the course. Stay the course. And, and those of you that were here, I think distinctly remembers that.
Harriet Hagerman.
Yeah, it was, the attorney's name was Harriet Hagerman. All I'm saying is, I love them as partners. In some ways, I hope they are very, very active on that committee. I hope they're providing advice to that committee. I'm just very, very uncomfortable at giving them a position on the committee that's automatic. I think their role is important, but I don't think it's the primary role. It's a secondary role, and it's part of the whole process. And that also goes for the Conservation District. Anything they can, they don't need to be Anything they can, they don't need to be a voting member on the committee to provide us advice, to give us grant. That's their job. That's what they're supposed to do. It's their career. Another point, we took, we took our members of our staff off of that committee because we thought they're going to, we thought it was inappropriate. The difference between our staff and the Game and Fish and the Conservation District in many ways is very, very slim. We have a water specialist, Darren Parkin, on there. He's not a voting member, but he's extremely valuable to the ranch. He doesn't need to be a voting member, and I would say to you, neither does the Game and Fish nor the Conservation District. So I'm not going to, I would wholeheartedly support a group of seven, but I cannot support specifying a particular organization as a voting member. Thank you.
Any other council members for the first time?
I'll make a brief comment. I think I said a lot of what I believed in last time, but I, to the point of asking them to participate, I support their, I support the Game and Fish and LCRD as partners in the ranch. I think they're very important. And someone once told me, if you want people at the table, you have to make it worth their time, and you have to make sure they understand they're valuable. So I believe that giving them a vote at the seat of the table, we are extending that we believe you're valuable long-term, we want you to come, come help us with the ranch. So I think by giving them a vote, we are, we are sending the exact message. So I wholeheartedly support this, and I don't see any drawbacks.
Anybody else for discussion before we go to a vote? All right, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes. Your Honor, could we clarify what we are voting on now? Are we voting on two members specific to these two organizations?
Yes.
Resolution is written.
Resolution as written, no changes. We've already started the vote. I'm not sure that I can go back. City Attorney?
We didn't have a chance for amendment.
Well, I think, I think you can, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, I can go back. I did call for, I did call for further discussion, and there was nobody that raised their hands.
But could we read, can we have the resolution read to us? Because I didn't hear any specifics.
Counselor Gabriel, would you like to? Actually, I've got it.
I've got it right here in front of me. I can do it.
That's not the whole resolution.
That's not the whole resolution.
Okay, bring it up here.
That's what I mean.
So Counselor Hanson, if you will go into your agenda and go back to the previous regular meeting?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, to the previous regular business meeting, which is two weeks ago. It would be on May 2nd, 2017. That item is originally on the consent agenda, and you can find the ranch resolution there under item AD. Do you have it pulled up? Actually, why don't we just clarify?
Please read it.
Just one page. Why don't we read that last one, two, three, four, five, that sixth paragraph, that last whereas, I think that gets to the point of what's in the resolution.
If you read the amendment on the cover sheet and then do the background on it, it includes everything.
Read the amendment, the resolution.
Okay, this is, this is Resolution 2017-32, modifying the number of commission members on the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee from five to seven, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, and talking about, whereas, the need to adjust the membership of the committee from five to seven members to allow for permanent voting members from the Laramie Rivers Conservation District and Wyoming Game and Fish as assigned by respective entities.
Counselor Hanson, does that clarify for you?
That clarifies it, but it wasn't read beforehand, so I wanted to have that.
Okay. Counselor Polikas?
I don't know whether this is appropriate or not. However, I would like to make an amendment to increase the number on that board to seven, but not specify the Game and Fish or the Laramie Rivers Conservation District as a automatic member.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. Discussion on the amendment?
Vice Mayor?
This is a repeat of last time. Do we just repeat it again, basically, or do we have?
City Attorney?
Mayor, Counselor, yeah, it's perfectly appropriate. This came up by, for reconsideration, so you have the same thing you had two weeks ago, and it's being, there's an amendment on the floor, there's the same amendment from two weeks ago, and so that's perfectly appropriate. But now we have to deal with the amendment that just, that just expands it to seven with, without denominating who the other two people are. So we'll deal with that amendment first, just as we did two weeks ago.
Discussion on the amendment only. Counselor Schuster?
I think it'll be better this time because we have nine people. It's either going to get down or up, and I think it's.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, there's Counselor Shumway, second.
There we go. So I mean, I'm a little undecided. I said last week that I was in favor of the seven, but not in assigning two. This would be one of the few times we've ever done this, and I will probably vote the same way I did last week, but I'm happy there's nine people here. It's going to be settled because it was an exact tie, and ties fail. So I'm happy to see this.
Counselor Polikas?
Very briefly, I'd like to point out one thing on the amendment. It does not preclude the board from nominating a member from Game and Fish or both to the board. It only precludes an automatic position on the board.
Counselor Shumway?
Real quickly, I am in favor of, I mean, if it came, like I said, if they came with those two members, I would vote yes for them to be included. But perhaps in 10 years from now, that's not a good idea. In 10 years from now, but we're still stuck with them staying on the board, and there's only really five appointments. And so I want to keep it open, I want to keep it where it's common, instead of uncommon, to have this to where there's five, seven applications for seven positions.
Further discussion. Counselor Gabriel?
Mayor, I would emphasize once again, this is an advisory board. Why not have the best people available on this advisory board to the city council?
I disagree with that.
Other discussion on the amendment. I'll make a comment to the amendment, and that is, I disagree that this is something we're stuck with in the future. As we've changed the composition of the advisory committee in the past to fit our current needs, we can make changes in the future. If in five or 10 years it doesn't make sense, or those organizations are no longer interested in participating in the ranch, the council can, of course, bring a resolution and change the composition of the advisory committee. The council could abolish the commission, the advisory committee, if they so choose, if that's what's appropriate for the ranch at that time. We're not stuck with anything. But again, I will emphasize, the specific membership is important to me, because I don't just want these two people to think they're valuable. I want to extend that community partnership and say, I think Game and Fish is important, and I think LCRD is important. They're very, very important for a lot of aspects we've already talked about. So for me, the agencies are important. Any other discussion on the amendment? Going once, going twice? All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment?
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Summerville?
No.
That is five yeses and four nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries, so we are back to the main motion as amended. So now we are modifying the committee to seven members only with no specific designations. Further discussion from the council. Counselor Henry?
This is just really, it angers me, because now we have to have people apply for two seats, and we may or may not get Laramie Rivers Conservation District, and we may or may not get the Game and Fish, somebody from Game and Fish to apply to the commission, and then we've lost that expertise. Oh, but maybe we can get a rancher, or maybe we can get a water attorney on the, on the Monolith Ranch Advisory Commission. So, I mean, I, I, I don't know how to vote, I don't know how to vote on this.
Further discussion from the council on this? Counselor Hanson?
Just an observation. I would hope that members from both commissions would apply and be interviewed by council as we usually do, and I think council will, whoever does the interviewing will have a great respect for these two organizations bringing forward members and recommend to the whole council to appoint them. I just like to keep the process open. It is a citizens' committee, and if they want to apply as citizens, that's perfectly fine. And I have no objection to being members, them being members of these particular commissions, but I have an objection to them coming to the commission as members. That's my, my difference.
Counselor Polikas?
First of all, Your Honor, we're talking about the amendment, which we've already passed.
No.
Second of all, second of all, I, I, I fully, second of all, I fully support the motion on the floor, and I believe it creates the flexibility both now and in the future that will benefit the board.
Further discussion for the motion on the floor?
I would just like to point out that we have a couple of other boards and commissions that are very specific about their membership. And, you know, we've got the Board of Health, which requires a dentist, it requires a medical doctor, it requires, I don't know, there are like four doctors on the board. Your, your Commission for Disabilities has very specific requirements, membership, and we, you know, we don't play with your, with your membership, so I don't know.
Further discussion on this?
Counterargument, these members are not members of other commissions. That's the cogent point.
I don't want to get into a back and forth on this, please. Any further discussion on this? Okay, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Gabriel?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Pierce? Oops, excuse me. Polikas?
Yes.
Pierce?
Doesn't matter.
No. Summerville?
No.
That is six yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10, Counselor Schuster?
Thank you very much. The title of this is to award the bid for an 18th Street reconstruction project. I move to award the bid for the 18th Street reconstruction project to Simon Contractors, Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount of $425,090.60, along with the contingency of $42,509, for a total amount of $467,599.60, and authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $184,175 to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second?
Second by Counselor Hanson. City staff, welcome.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, along with the city council goal to maintain citywide infrastructure improvements, staff is looking to do, construct the 18th Street reconstruction project, which will stretch between Rainbow Avenue to, or, yeah, Rainbow Avenue to Sheridan Street, along 18th Street. Along with the street reconstruction, there will be stormwater sidewalk, curb and gutter, ADA ramps, and approximately 596 lineal feet of water line replacement. The, as per the city's purchasing policy, on March 28th, the bids were publicly advertised and received on March 28th, and the low bidder was Simon Contractors. The contract includes $81,250 from General Fund and $243,750 from SLIV Grant. The, the 10% contingency is paid by both Water Fund and General Fund, and the budget amendment comes from the Mill Street Project funding, so with that, I will take some questions.
Questions for staff? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just an observation, serving on the Disabilities Commission, I noticed you included curb cuts for ADA ramps. Thank you very much. I will report that to that commission because they asked about these things. Thank you.
Other questions for city staff?
I have one question, and that is, could you refresh my memory on what the pavement condition index was on this street, and why it's such a high priority for replacement?
I do not have the pavement index in front of me on this one, but the, the condition of the pavement on this has been overlaid multiple times with a severe crown on the street and drainage issues due to that situation, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counselor Schuster?
It's a comment, more than a question. We have a soil out there that just isn't the best soil to work with, and it does affect water lines. So a new upgrade in the water lines there will help it immensely last longer, because our soil conditions with our older style pipe just was not conducive to this water line.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public on this item? Discussion from council? Any discussion on this item? Did you have one comment to make, and it's the standard comment when it comes to street reconstruction, and that is, you know, we have a street out there with severe drainage issues, and I support replacing this, it's next to a major park. I think that's important that we do that. This is, this is a priority because of those drainage issues. We have other areas, especially in West Laramie, that have drainage issues. We're going to dump half a million dollars to repave this street. I think we should take a broader look at streets in West Laramie for drainage issues for the exact same problem. We've not seen these coming forward since the Lynn's Flynnford project. So I just, I want to make that comment. It's my usual one, everybody's familiar with it, so I'll leave it at that. Any other comments? City Attorney, do roll call, please.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Summerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to item number 11, Counselor Polikas?
Thank you. This is an amendment to the project development agreement between the city of Laramie, the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, and Bright Agrotech. I would move to approve Amendment 1 to the project development agreement between the city of Laramie, Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, and Bright Agrotech, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City staff, Mr. Farston?
Honorable Mayor, council, thanks for your time and consideration tonight. So as you all know, the intent of the project development agreement is to accurately define the project's scope and then the roles and responsibilities of the associated parties, and this amendment, as is presented in the cover sheet, serves that purpose with three primary changes. So in the pre-construction phase, through due diligence, the initial site pledged for this project turned out to require a significant amount of infrastructure, including a forest sewer, fire pump, and a lot of export and import of structural fill, so it was cost prohibitive. So the site location is moved. In tandem with that, we ensured that the new site satisfies the match amount for the grant, and it does. And then the third component is just insurance provision, so that that's specifically laid out, so that we have no, no gaps in coverage during the course of, course of construction and through occupancy of the building. So the last item is purely housekeeping, but everything else is accurate and reflects the, the roles and scope of the project, so I would open it to any questions, please.
Questions for Mr. Farston? Okay, seeing no questions. Thank you. Any comments from the public on this? LCBA need to make any comment on this? Okay. All right, discussion from council on this. All right. Counselor Polikas?
Actually, I just, just a really quick word in support of Bright Agrotech. They're a company that is growing by leaps and bounds. They've been looking for a place. We were fortunate to get a very large grant from the state of Wyoming. We were fortunate to get a very large grant from the state of Wyoming. Ground's going to be, I believe it is, already been broke, and I'm just excited to see this project go forward, and I think it's going to be a company that's going to be very beneficial to our employment numbers and our City of Laramie in general.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we should also be count ourselves fortunate to get a grant from, in the current climate that we find ourselves in, from the Wyoming Business Grant Office to, for this project, and I think it's very valuable, and we should be very thankful to have that grant opportunity here. Thank you.
Any further comments? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Plakas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to item 12, Counselor Plakas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This is a guaranteed maximum price agreement to the design and pre-construction contract for Bright Agrotech Corporate Office Facility. So I would move to approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the design and pre-construction contract for construction of the Bright Agrotech Corporate Office Facility with Hanselton Wyoming Contractors in the amount not to exceed $2,895,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Mr. Farston.
Honorable Mayor, council, again, thank you for your time. So this is the same contract instrument you guys have seen, I think, for the six times since you've been working with me. This is our chosen delivery method, so we've been through the design, programming, and the construction documents that are 100%, building permit is in place, and we've started grading in some foundation work that was included in the initial pre-construction contract, so this just gives us full contract authority to move forward into full construction phase and to get this thing finished up in a timely manner for our committed business. Open it up to any questions, please.
Questions for Mr. Farston about this. All right, no questions. Any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from council on this item? Make a comment, and again, we're happy to have Bright Agrotech here, and this is going to be a very successful project for the community, working with our partners and making all of this come together, so we look forward to speedy construction. City Clerk, will you do roll call, please?
Plakas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Moving on to item number 13, Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. Following is an agreement of collective bargaining between the City of Laramie and the Firefighters Union. I move to approve and ratify fiscal year 2017 to 2018 collective bargaining agreement between City of Laramie and International Association of Firefighters Union Local 946, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. Counselor Schuster, or, Schumway, my apologies.
Thank you. Your Honor, I just want to mention that we have a great fire department. They have brought forward this agreement, understanding the city's financial situation. They have been, I think, it's a reasonable agreement, it's one that I have to compliment our management team, our city manager and assistant city manager, and their chief, fire chief, undergoes the participatedness. I think we have something that is within the abilities of the city to maintain and to continue to have, you know, the best fire department possible for this city, and so I'm very much in favor of this, I will support it.
City staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start out by acknowledging we have a terrible typo on the cover sheet, which I just noticed. You know how you look at these things a hundred times, but we referred to personal versus personnel, so anyway, we certainly meant personnel. As far as background on the collective bargaining agreement, of course, the current agreement will expire June 30th of this year. This agreement would take effect July 1st and be in effect through the entirety of fiscal year 2017, 2018. The cover sheet identifies the major changes that were negotiated by the two bargaining teams in March of this year. I'll note under the first bullet point, there are no compensatory changes in this agreement, so there will be no changes to wage or benefits for fire personnel who are members of the local 946 union. The contract is for one year, and that is stated for you in the contract exhibit on page 22. In terms of working conditions, there are three notable changes. The first change is that the city drug and alcohol policy will now allow for termination upon first offense under this contract where blood alcohol content exceeds .02 or any presence of drugs is detected. That can be found on page 18 of the contract exhibit. Item bullet point two, we are discontinuing the union's contribution for the purchase of exercise equipment, and that really is just a housekeeping measure. If you'll remember, we discontinued the city's contribution financially last year, and so this is just housekeeping to change the way that we provide for the exercise equipment. And then third, the injury leave section, which can be found on page 12 of the contract, has been refined to ensure that firefighters who are injured on the job will work their standard schedule. We call that 2763, but what that means is they'll work, they'll be paid for on injury leave, the hours that they normally would have worked, and the schedule they normally would have worked. What we've incorporated into the contract this year is a return to work incentive that would allow management to assign a firefighter to a different schedule, what we call a 2080 or a 40-hour week, what most of us are familiar with that are not in fire service, if the particular employee would choose not to return to work for light duty upon release by a medical professional to do so. So those are the major changes, really not much in the contract as far as change this year, and if you have questions, I'm here as well as Chief Johnson.
Questions, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you explain item number three, this is a reduction from 2763 hours to 20,080 hours.
It's two different schedules.
Define part-time employment, then, or what does this do? Seven hours per week or per day or whatever?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, 2080 is a 40-hour work week.
Yeah.
Typically, when we assign someone to a 2080 or 40-hour work week, it's your standard eight-to-five kind of schedule. That is different, of course, than what firefighters typically work. They typically work a couple days a week, not five days a week, and they work much longer shifts, and that's the difference.
So...
So it is full-time.
The 2080 is still full-time employment?
Correct.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions for city staff? Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could get a clarification on page 18 again, on the drug policy, positive confirmed test result of alcohol and drug screening tests may result in disciplinary action, including dismissal. Is that different from the current policy in that it says it may result, and if you could explain that, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So this contract will allow for disciplinary action up to and including termination on a first offense, so on a first positive test, a .02 or greater BAC or any drugs. The prior contract that we're under right now that will end June 30th does not allow, it tied the hands of the city, and it provided that no termination could result from a first offense of the drug and alcohol policy. We could discipline, time off, et cetera, but no termination was allowable under the contracts that we've had up until this one, which will take effect July 1. Did I answer your question, counselor? Please?
Yes, mostly, but when it says "may," what does that entail? Does that entail some kind of discipline action, or just depending on the situation, there's, it's kind of an open area there?
It allows, I think the "may," what it does is it allows discretion to management staff to evaluate the circumstances and the situation, and determine the appropriate level of discipline, but it could be, it could be a warning, it could be all the way up to termination, but it allows that discretion to management.
Appreciate it.
Further questions for city staff on this? Any comments from the public on this item? Comments from council on this item? Okay, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Shumway.
Yes.
Plakas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Henry.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carries. On to item number 14, Counselor Henry.
This is Original Ordinance Number 1969, Adopting and Amending Codes Regulating Buildings and Building Construction Within the City of Laramie. I move to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 1969, Adopting and Amending Codes Regulating Building and Building Construction Within the City of Laramie.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanson. City staff, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I think I can make this really quick for you. What this ordinance is, is an update to the city's building codes. It's the collection of eight different construction codes that we use in, you know, the plumbing and the building and mechanical codes and all those different things. Does not include the fire code because you've already adopted that previously. These are done on a three-year cycle, as you know, and our last update was February 2014. The reason that we do these updates is so we can keep current on technology, implement new things, take care of some problems in the previous additions, and add and get rid of things as needed. We, sometimes, these updates are kind of difficult. This one, I think, is pretty routine. I'm sure somebody would disagree with me, but I think this is just kind of a routine housekeeping thing this time around. I don't see any huge controversial issues like we ran into last time with some energy codes and different types of things, so I think it's going to be a good code to use. We need to get it adopted so that we can stay in line with state statutes. We're a little bit behind on that, but we'll catch up. So I did not include any background information in the packets. I'm more than willing to provide anything that you might need for a second reading, and I can answer whatever questions you have. I would just ask that we move on to a second reading and set a public hearing so that we can move forward. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer those.
Counselor Plakas.
Could you summarize the major changes that are between this code and the code three years ago?
Well, the code three years ago was really heavily into, like, energy codes, and I know we ran into some difficulties with, you know, how to handle some of those things so that the home costs, you know, don't skyrocket and that sort of thing. We dealt with an issue with fire sprinkling in residential buildings, and I think we dealt with those in a really good way. As far as these codes, you know, it's hard to summarize all of the changes. I don't see anything that's just really, you know, a large issue. Most of the things are small, you know, changes and adds, subtracts. I just don't honestly see anything that's, that could be very controversial. I'm happy to provide, you know, a detailed list of all the changes and that sort of thing, but they are very extensive for the eight different codes.
I would be interested in a detailed list, particularly as it refers to residential and multifamily construction of the changes.
I could certainly provide something like that.
I'm not interested in the minor, the minor changes, I'm interested in the significant changes.
Absolutely.
Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious, has this been circulated among contractors yet, or are you still kind of waiting for a public hearing to get feedback on this?
It has not been circulated. Like I say, we're a little bit behind, so most of the contractors are already using the 15 codes, especially on the commercial projects. What we would typically do is, once we kind of get a feel for this moving forward, we'll start placing some information on our website so that we can see some of these changes and some of the things that some of the builders might run into, kind of give them heads-up that things might be changing a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
I did read through the whole thing, so it is very minor changes. There is deletion of some things. Sprinkler systems will only be on threeplexes and higher, things like that. If it's a duplex or a single, there is none, they cross that out, but it would always be the contractor's prerogative, too, that, what they wanted to do, and I agree that it's fairly small, minor changes, there wasn't anything huge that's going on in this one.
Any other questions for city staff? Counselor Plakas.
Counselor Hanson, did you have a question?
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Counselor Hanson, please.
Thank you. This is termed an international code. Is it adopted worldwide, or what does international mean here?
Well, that's a great question, Mayor and council. It's an internationally used code. It's, just to give you a short description of this, it's published by a nonprofit organization called the International Code Council, and the membership is anybody that wants to be a member. Government people, industry people, architects, engineers, anybody that's interested in a building code can be a member of this organization, and they meet once a year to vote on changes. Anybody can submit changes. We can submit changes as a city if we wanted to do that. Goes through a whole legislative process, and through committees and all that sort of thing, and voted on, and if it receives a majority vote, it's incorporated into the changes, into the next addition. So there is no international adoption. The adoption is through local governments, agencies, cities, counties, state governments, that sort of thing. So each person, each entity, I guess I should say, is free to adopt their own code. In Wyoming, the State Fire Marshal's office has adopted this code, and the Wyoming statute says that local communities, if you have a building department, if you enforce codes, then you need to stay up with the current additions, and so that's what we're attempting to do here.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Plakas.
When we adopted the last addition to this code, we modified or deleted a few things on the energy code part of it. Are those still, are those still being deleted in your proposal here?
Yes, they are. We're not proposing any changes this time around, and so the changes that were made in the last addition will stand. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? Counselor Henry.
I had a question about Section 2. It says removes unrelated language concerning landfills, and it would be nice to know what that language is that's being removed.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I could go to the code and look and read, and then I also had a question about Section 4, where you're revising and adding values to a table on the when design, what does it mean equals exposure C equals no equals no?
Okay, Mayor and council, let me address the landfill issue first. What does that have to do with? I don't know. That language was, it came from somewhere, but when the city adopted the UDC... That language was, it came from somewhere, but when the city adopted the UDC several years ago, many years ago now, the language has sort of stuck. Has nothing to do with anything that anybody in our division can figure out what it is. So I just used the opportunity to just strike it. Doesn't have anything to do with, like, a city landfill. It just has to do with people that are filling holes in their land and that sort of thing. There's nothing really more to it. It's just some orphan language that was mistakenly left in the code. As far as the values, because this is an international code, things are different. There are different climatic and geological conditions all through the country. So, the local communities need to insert their own values into those tables. And we're talking about wind speeds, which would be different in different communities. So we adopt a wind speed, the different topography, and some other things like special wind region we are not in because that has more to do with coastal regions, with hurricanes and that sort of thing. So that's why it says no. And windborne debris zone, no, we're not in one of those zones either. Because again, that has to do with coastal, that would apply more to a coastal community. So we've inserted our own values in here. And actually, just to, I guess I should say that those have not changed. They're just, it's just reiterating it. So, in the building code, there are tables and charts and maps and all that sort of thing. So it's just a reiteration of what we've already done in the past.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, do we have any comments from the public on this item? Comments from council on this item? All right. I do believe that we also, we're missing a piece here. We need to set a public hearing. There was not in the motion. We need to either set a public hearing, or we need to do it on.
We don't have to set the public.
Oh, we don't have to set a public hearing?
Not in your motion.
All right. Anything else? I think that it's pretty clear from council, they'd like some more information, if we can, for the next reading on the substantive changes and the, what we're actually taking out of code. I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if I could at least take a once over it before we adopt it as well. So, anything else?
So we don't, yeah, we don't need.
The whole thing.
The whole thing. We just need the pages with the changes. Thank you.
Will do.
You wouldn't want the whole thing.
Just an executive summary. All right, city clerk, can you do roll call here on first reading?
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no's, your honor.
Okay. And as we've reached eight o'clock, why don't we take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back and talk about the first offender treatment, or first offender program. About 10 minutes, everybody. We are back. A little longer than 10 minutes break. All right, we're going to go to item number 15, which is the vice mayor.
Okay. I move to approve on first reading original ordinance number 1968, adding ordinance 9.12.253 and 9.12.255 to the Laramie municipal code to allow certain controlled substance defendants to qualify for first offender treatment and to make using or being under the influence of controlled substances and offenses.
Second.
Second by Councilor Hanson. City attorney.
Mayor, council, thank you. Tried to lay this out in the cover sheet, but a couple of preliminary points. First, these proposed ordinances don't mean that the city of Laramie would change its policy toward being strong against controlled substance use and abuse. That's not what we're up to here. It's a serious matter in Laramie, and it's always, and we've treated it as a serious matter. Second, I will stress that that said, the municipal court deals with misdemeanor amounts of controlled substances, felony amounts, or people even with misdemeanor amounts who come to town to sell drugs, in other words, possession with intent to distribute. Those people are all charged over in county courts. And so what we have noticed, and I'm here with Holly Belaski, Austin Belaski, who is in the trenches doing the prosecutions for us, and she's here to answer questions if you need some details about what this looks like day to day. But what we're dealing with in the ordinances now is the possibility that people are treated very differently in Laramie versus if they're found possessing controlled substances 15 miles east of town in the county. Because the state of Wyoming has statutes, a first offender statute and a use statute that allows state prosecutors in state courts to take a look at an individual defendant and figure out what the proper charge is. And it allows a judge in state court to give first offender treatment to a person who qualifies, and it allows a prosecutor in state court to charge someone with use rather than possession. This is important because not only do we try to be very serious in prosecuting our crimes, but we try to do justice and try to tailor our charges to the individual and the individual circumstances. So, what we're asking for, what I'm recommending, is that we add to our municipal ordinances the statutes that exist for state prosecutors and for state judges. It's been, those statutes, we mirror them exactly in what's before you. Those statutes have existed for years in state prosecutions for these matters, and they serve a good purpose, which is both to accomplish the purposes of the state, but to treat offenders individually. So we'll take questions.
Questions for the city attorney on this program. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, honor. I think it's a very good idea. The only thing that I didn't read here, and I just want to have you clarify this, is there is apparently probation, of course, seems to be involved. How long is the probationary period, or is that in the eye of the judge to decide?
How long can the probation be, Ms. Austin Belaski?
Honorable mayor, Councilor Henry, uh, sorry, Councilor Hanson, I would think that it would be based on the individual and what the.
Why don't you come up to the podium?
It would probably be, more likely, based on the individual facts and circumstances. Right now, the only first offender that's permitted in Laramie municipal court is a formal 713-301. You get one of those in your lifetime in all 50 states. So this just gives a little bit more discretion on how those are handled. Under a 301, the minimum is a year. This doesn't have a minimum. My default for a 301 on a possession is that one-year minimum, so I would think that it would be something similar right now on a 301. My office does prepare a draft order for the court to use and consider, and then, of course, it's the court's order, so the judge is free to amend it as he sees fit. But I anticipate.
You've answered my question. It's in your discretion to set a minimum or higher or whatever it is. I presume you have a maximum you can't exceed or something.
Under the state statute, there isn't, but I would probably follow the guidelines of a 713-301, which we've never gone as high as five years. But something akin to that. Of course, it's not my discretion. I make a recommendation to the judge, and always the order is up to the judge at that point.
Thank you, I understand that. Thank you very much.
Questions, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. This is basically, I hate to say, like what you were just describing there, that when somebody is above the limit in alcohol, but not, I'm going to call it stumbling down drunk, that we can have a first offender statute. So this is going to follow it, and I hear it fairly close. And I don't want to just pick on something and say it, but since we have the state next to us that's now selling marijuana as recreational use, I know it's coming back because a person came in and sat beside me in a bar, and I went, holy cow, he's not even trying to hide it a bit. So. It's kind of obvious what we're doing here. And I guess that it's probably okay. I'm one of those weirdos that's, no, I'm not going to ever try this thing because they do dark testing where I'm at, and I'm never going to have that problem. So, it's amazing how many companies are now doing that.
Questions, Councilor Shumway.
I have a question about the 713-301 and also about first offender status. If the attorney, or whoever's representing the individual comes and requests to have a 713-301, is it automatic, or is it at the discretion of the judge? And as far as first offender status, what is your expectation of the number that will receive first offender status? Is it going to be all first offenders, or will it just be the ones that are here? Well, it says, you know, I think it's going to be at the discretion of the judge, but what will we recommend? Because the thing I'm concerned about is individuals saying, don't worry about it, the first time you're going to get a fine, and that's it. It's just going to be wiped out. So, first time is, you know, first strikes, you know, no problem. Second time, you got to worry about it. First time, don't worry about it. And that's what I'm concerned about. I don't want to have that attitude of the individuals, you know, students, you know, and people in town saying, I don't have to be careful until I have used up my first strike, and then I have to start being careful.
Yes, honorable mayor and councilor Shumway, just to be clear, a first offender under a 301 is definitely a separate mechanism from the first offender. This is actually found in 357-1037 of the state statutes. And the language has been mirrored. For a formal 301, it requires the consent by me, by law, the consent of the defendant and the consent of the court. So all three of those are required for a formal 301. Under this, we've mirrored the state statute. It does not require my consent. It still requires the consent of the defendant and the consent of the court. And so, that is a difference. I would be, you know, as for just getting it as a rubber stamp, a 713-301 that requires my consent certainly does not. There have been quite a few people in the time that I've been prosecuting for the city that I felt like were not appropriate candidates, and so it's certainly not a rubber stamp in Laramie municipal.
Yeah, if I may, if I may jump in here, mayor, councilor Shumway. This has come up in our office when, largely when we're talking about driving under the influence, DUIs. We do not hand them out routinely, first offenders for DUIs. There is no policy in our office that anybody should think that you get to have a DUI one time in Laramie. There are attorneys out there who think, oh, we should hand them out like candy. But Ms. Austin Belaski's been very careful about that and has a real strict policy about how we look at a person's criminal record, how they acted during the arrest, the level of intoxication, all sorts of things. We get pushback from that, from the defense bar. But there is no, you get to drive once drunk in Laramie for free. Now, this first offender ordinance that we're proposing here just has to do with possession, a misdemeanor possession of a controlled substance. If there's driving offenses involved, that's entirely, that's an entirely different thing. So I just felt I needed to point that out. We are careful, and Ms. Austin Belaski is very careful on different, on different matters where life is at stake in a DUI.
Other questions? Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Don't forget to sign the clerk sheet on the way back out when you leave.
Or do it now. And state your name for the record.
Oh, and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Paul Weaver. I'm a Laramie resident. I'm not going to speak to any of the legal issues because you have a staff that can do that and is trained to do so. I would make a couple of comments to you about some of the other factors that you might consider when making this decision. I think this is a good policy for the city of Laramie to be pursuing, and the council to take a look at. I think it's been certainly discussed, at least peripherally, for the last couple of years. So I hope that you'll think very carefully about it as you make that decision. There is some pretty solid research that's been conducted over quite a long period of time about some of the possible benefits for having these types of first offender programs in place. They take a lot of different forms and shapes, and different kinds of probation or diversion programs. Some of you may be familiar with some of the diversion type of programs that we have in Laramie and Albany County that are hosted by groups like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and organizations like that. So I would just say that if you want to, you can find very easily through some quick internet searches some pretty good evidence. And also, I don't think you need to look much further than the fact that other courts are doing this. The city attorney, the prosecutor, talked about how it's not necessarily just a gimme. I mean, there are other considerations that are taken into account before people are given that first offender status. But there are numerous reasons why people look to try and implement these things and why you have them in some of your other court systems in Wyoming. I would just ask you folks to consider the collateral consequences and collateral benefits when you're talking about this. What I mean by collateral consequences is when folks come in and they are charged with that misdemeanor controlled substance possession, they don't have that avenue that you're potentially looking at giving them. That can have impacts that go far beyond the, you know, perceived social harm that they're being punished for, the crime that they're being punished for. And it can almost get to the point where, if you look at it, it starts to be a little bit disproportionate. We're talking about instances where this can affect employment opportunities and academic opportunities if they're not able to pursue that opportunity that they may receive to say, I need to get myself together. I'm getting charged with, you know, possession of a controlled substance. I have issues in my life or things I need to take a look at. And that's where you get into the collateral benefits piece. Sometimes what can happen is, if the circumstances are right, and they aren't always, of course, but if the circumstances are right, you're looking at opportunities for folks to be identified pretty early on through potential treatment and resources that they receive or may need to pursue through some kind of probation or diversion program that they might not otherwise if they just paid a fine, or potentially, I'm not sure if that's a jailable offense, but there'd be a fine, and they may just move on without ever really taking a look at some of those issues. And I think that speaks to Councilor Shumway's point about, well, you know, is this just something where we're looking at, you know, don't worry about it that first time? Well, hopefully, it's going to be more involved than that. And hopefully, it's going to be an opportunity for those people to get some introduction to some resources that may prevent them from ending up in that situation again. So I'd like you to consider that as a collateral benefit. And that's all. I think it's a, I think it's a good move. I hope the council does too. Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Question by council. Any comments? Councilor Gabriel.
Thank you, mayor. Just to emphasize, at the end of the cover letter from our city attorney, the proposed Laramie municipal ordinance is that controlled substance defendants in Laramie may be treated as they would be in all state courts in Wyoming. I think that's very important indeed, and the other information that was listed in the cover letter is very helpful, and I appreciate that. And I think this is something that the city needs to do.
Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, honor. It seems to me that it would be good if somebody appears in court on a first offense to point out to these folks, and I presume you do that, what a second offense could conceivably entail, what was just pointed out to us, which I think it kind of ruins your life. You know, employment-wise. employment-wise, education-wise, et cetera. And I think sometimes people are just not aware of what the consequences are. So if somebody is told, you have a first-time free ride, so to speak, be careful as to what happens on the second time. And I think that would be something I would assume you do as a court that this is pointed out to people very clearly, you know, what this might entail for the future of somebody's life. And I, Paul, thank you very much for hinting at that. I think that's so important. People just don't, young folks sometimes don't think about these things. You have a whole life ahead of you. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
I do a lot of research in my field, and it's in the mechanical, and even though our neighboring state, I'm gonna put it right out there, Colorado, has recreational use on it, a lot of the employers do not. And this was a case in Denver, Colorado, where a person had a minor accident, and they love to say, okay, we're gonna go to send you to the hospital, get you checked out. No, they're not. They're gonna go back there and they're gonna see, was this person using drugs? And they were, and they were terminated. They took it to court and said, well, it's recreational use in this state now, and they said, no, it's not in your employment. So the termination was upheld, it went all the way to the Colorado Supreme Court. Colorado Supreme Court said that here at this employment, it says you will be drug-free, and it's called a drug-free environment. So that person was fired. A lot of people don't realize this, that in a lot of employment agencies, you will get tested. The University of Wyoming draws names out of the hats on all their athletes, and they do random drug testing to this day because it is an NCAA violation. A lot of people are going, oh, when I grow up, I'll quit. Well, you better think about growing up now. I like the idea, I think it's great that we're gonna give them, and I'm gonna use the word a second chance, but I hope some people realize they probably shouldn't abuse the first chance because employment, education, it's gonna be infected by this. Thank you.
Any other comments from Council on first reading for this change? No? All right. City Clerk, real call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
The entire restaurant. So, I want to make, I want to clarify whether or not they have to kick out college students under the age of 21. And then the other one is with the example of the sports bar and grill. Can they bring families in at midnight and serve them in the bar and grill, sports bar and grill? I just want to, is that the way our ordinance is reading right now?
Your Honor, Counselor Shumway, excuse me, under A1, so we're in that same section, if the establishment has a commercial kitchen and their primary source of revenue is from the operation, of the operation is from the sale of food, and they wish to prove that to us, so they, or claim it to us, I'm not accepting their books and things like that, but they need to make a statement that their revenue is primarily from food, which to me is over 50 percent. We didn't define it any other way, then they could have minors in their building at any time.
They're open.
That they are open, exactly. Their normal hours. So, Applebee's, I would assume that their revenue is from more from food than from alcohol. So, if they wish to have the ability to have minors in the facility after 8:00 PM, they would just need to state that their revenue comes from, primarily from food, and then they would be allowed to do so. And then the same thing from the sports bar. If a sports bar would like to have the ability to have folks in after 8:00 PM, they would just need to fill out the statement forms that we'll create, and then they would be allowed to do that.
Just one more. I don't, I cannot think of an example of any 24-hour restaurant. Let us suppose for a graduation or something like that, that Applebee's wanted to stay open until, you know, 5:00 in the morning or something like that. The way it reads right now is alcohol service must end at 2:00, you cannot start up again until, what is it, 6:00?
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM. So, we're going to enforce that in all restaurants, bars, clubs, any, anyone with an alcohol permit, license, the 6 to 2 is going to be enforced across the board, correct?
Your Honor, Counselor Shumway, yes, that is currently what state statute is, and that anybody who serves alcohol in their establishment would have those hour limitations, except in your code, right now, I was just looking at it. Currently in Laramie Municipal Code, there is an exception for clubs, and I'll tell you where it is. You don't have the copy of it in front of you, because I did not recommend any changes, but there is an exception. It is, you may write this down for your reference if you want to go look. It is 9.09.430. It's on your Intranet in the full document. It reads, "Clubs holding liquor license shall be exempt from the hours of operation specified in Section 5.09.425 herein." And that is currently in Laramie Municipal Code.
So, they can serve 24 hours a day?
That is correct. Your, your, I can't remember how many of their four, no, there's more, six, clubs that you have. Your Elks, your Moose, your Eagles, your VFW, American Legion.
I did not know that.
Yes.
Can I ask this? What logic is there for us to permit that? I know the state permits it, but why, why shouldn't we be more restrictive and put them under the same restrictions that we have with every other license?
Please, City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Shumway, that is the decision of counsel on what you'd like to do.
So, previous councils?
No, and, and the current one, you have the option to-
You can change it.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to move that the serving hours for all licenses would not begin before 6:00 AM and would not continue past 2:00 AM without exception.
Might I suggest, Your Honor, would you like your motion then to read, to remove Section 5.09.430?
That's easier, that'd be fine.
Hours of operation exemptions from Laramie Municipal-
That's easier, that'd be fine, because that accomplishes the same purpose, correct?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Counselor Schuster on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor Shumway, anything additional on the amendment?
No. Not right now.
Okay, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I would vote on this, I would certainly like to hear from those individuals affected by it. This is something new that I haven't heard discussed previously, and for us to go ahead, and of course, this is the second reading, and it still can be changed, but I would like to hear from the VFWs, the Moose, and Elks before I would vote on this. I understand where Joe's coming from, but I, I would feel uncomfortable voting on something like this before I would have input from those affected.
Counselor Schuster.
I belong to the Moose, and I don't think they even knew it was out there. They'd never ever come close to it. And I just, I can't, I can only think of one group that might, but I don't believe that we should have it so that people, wow, we can party all night! Let's join this affiliation! I just, I just, no. I think that, I'm curious, would we kind of tell them that they should be following the same guidelines like last call, 1:30, and, and finish, pick up drinks at 2:00? Because that's kind of one of the things I want to hear, is, is yes, we pick up the drinks at 2:00. We're going to let you stay inside because it's snowing outside or something till your ride gets here, but your alcohol's done at 2:00. And you can have food, water, things like that, so, that's my opinion on that one.
Counselor Polikas?
I just need some clarity. What, what section are we dealing with? And could you repeat the motion, or the amendment to the motion?
I believe that the amendment is removing Section 5.09.430, and that, that section is not in the document that's online uploaded, it's on the document that's on the Intranet. So, we don't have that in front of us right now.
I apologize, I did not expect that, and so I did not offer that up to you.
This has been a lot, been there.
I can read it again.
I think I have the floor. So, I'm really unclear just exactly the ramifications of this, if we were to pass it, and what we're doing right now.
Counselor, City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Polikas, let me read it to you again, what it is that you'd be removing, and then I'll describe what, what would happen if you did that. So, the removal is of 5.09.430, hours of operations slash clubs exempt is the title. And it states, "Clubs holding liquor licenses shall be exempt from the hours of operation specified in Section 5.09.425 herein." That is the section you do have in Attachment A, where it talks about from 2:00 PM, or 2, excuse me, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM that they need to be closed. If you did that, if there are any club establishments who currently operate after 2:00 AM and before 6:00 AM, they would come July 1st, when this would become effective, they could no longer have those hours. They would have to close at 2:00 AM like everybody else, and they would not be able to open again until 2:00, or 6:00 AM.
Thank you, that clarifies it. Do I still have the floor?
Please, you do.
I, I support, all right. If we pass this, it, it sounds reasonable to me, and it sounds logical to me. And I can't believe clubs, the majority of clubs are going to be open after 2:00, but I'm really resistant to pass this amendment now, because I would like an opportunity for the clubs to be aware of it, and if it's not reasonable and logical, they certainly will allow us to do it. So, what I'd like to suggest, if possible, is to postpone this amendment until third reading, and advertise it or inform the clubs that this is coming before us. Is that feasible to do?
City Attorney, before I dig out my Roberts Rules book, what's the process for postponing an amendment?
I, I guess I would make a-
I want to make sure it's feasible before we get on it.
It would be my motion to postpone the amendment until third reading.
I, I, it might be easier to withdraw the proposed amendment and bring it back on third reading.
I second it.
I, I will bring it back on third reading, but I will withdraw if it's okay with the second.
It's okay with the second.
But it will be brought back.
Thank you.
Could I make a comment before we get on with this?
Yes, please, yes, please, Counselor Shumway.
The, the logic is that there are some safeguards, such as safe ride, and also law enforcement that have specific times that, you know, that there is enhanced, well, enhanced enforcement, and also the ability to, to provide safe rides home for people. When we extend that into all hours of the morning, that goes away, and those people don't have the ability to get home safely, and so they would be driving their own vehicles or else walking home. You know, it just seems to be much more complicated, and that's why I, I see a reason, a logical reason for us to, to cease for a certain specific period of time to, to, you know, get, get people home for work or the next day or something like that.
Further comments on this, Counselor Polikas?
The only thing I want to say about it is, I would like us to, to direct the clerk, I don't think there's that many clubs out there, to call the clubs and inform them, the managers of the clubs, that this will be coming forward as an amendment on third reading, so that we're not blindsiding them.
Counselor Hanson?
Since we are still commenting on this, even though it has been withdrawn-
Right.
I remember that in the smoking ordinance discussion, the clubs brought forward the argument that they do not have any salaried employees, that therefore, you know, we are not interfering with working laws, et cetera. They are an independent organization that really are not under our jurisdiction at, at this point, because it's a private club, and I'm just pointing that out because that may come back as an argument on their part, that's why they can not be beholden to the operation of closing. I, I find it perfectly reasonable, especially from your argument of driving home late and not having another opportunity but their own car, that's reasonable, but I'm pointing out what may be coming down the pipe from them.
I think it would be our attorney to give us whether or not we can make that exception and make it enforceable with the clubs.
City Attorney, please.
Mayor, Counselor Shumway, yes, we can. Our power comes from our power to regulate sales of liquor under these licenses.
Yeah, okay, I would presume. It's not like smoking in that respect, yeah.
Any further discussion on this subject of the hours for the clubs before we move on to the next topic? Okay, so I want to take just a step back to the, the section in regards to the 8:00 PM clearing out. So, we've added a definition of commercial kitchen, and I'm wondering, can you tell me where, exactly where that definition came from? Or did, did we craft it, or has somebody already invented this?
And what page is it on?
Uh, it is on page three.
That starts the beginning. Your Honor, I Googled, definition of commercial kitchen, and I sandwiched together some information that to me seemed like a reasonable, there wasn't one set, you know, one way of doing it.
So, there's not a, a standard state definition of a commercial kitchen that we can use? Okay. And my question stems on that from, you know, we're using this as a means to classify which operations can have minors in there until 8:00 PM, and I'm trying to figure out, we've, we've had this in the past, where some, some establishments have tried very hard to stir the lot or get around it, and I'm trying to figure out how you would get around this particular definition of a, of a commercial kitchen, right? So, what I'm trying to avoid personally is the microwave on the counter and calling out the commercial kitchen and trying to justify that as having minors in there until 8:00. So, do you feel, and City Attorney, do we feel like we are, that that is a, the definition we have right now sufficiently gives us basis to push back against the establishment that puts a microwave on the counter and calls it a commercial kitchen? City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, if I could jump, jump in, we're continuing to work on this. I mean, we've looked, it's, it is surprisingly difficult to find a generally agreed-upon definition for a commercial kitchen.
Okay.
We approach it from, you know, do you need to be inspected by the, by the health authorities? Everything does, so that doesn't help. They don't have a separate definition. So, we'll continue to look, and that, and that's the best I can say. It's not a great answer, but we're still pushing, and we'll do it, and, because an enforcement action will probably fall on the police department's shoulders, and I know that the chief has at least mentioned to me that he doesn't want to get in debates about commercial kitchens either. So, we'll continue to work on this over the next couple of weeks.
Counselor Schuster?
A question, follow-up. We have a couple of different licenses out there. We have bar and grill, and we have full-blown liquor licenses. And I can see where this one is, or those are the two that are basically going to try to fall under this, because we had Carl McCrae in here that has a sports bar, and yes, he has the triple sink, so that he has the sanitizer, he's inspected, he has a range hood, he has everything like that. And then you also have your Born in the Barn, that's the same thing, and he has to prove to have his bar and grill license, he has to prove his food sales. So, we're going to have to tell the other bar that if you want to do this, we need to need, know your food sales from last year. And that would be basically it, to compare it against their alcohol sales, and then say, yes, you can then have that family bring in there, and I'm going to use the word seven-year-old, to have a meal with them. And he even said they have restrictions on it, that they will not allow someone in without the fam, and that one, to me, is quite acceptable, and if all he has to do is prove his food sales out, I know he can separate that out. But Born in the Barn will not have to do it, because they already are doing it.
Vice Mayor?
Regarding commercial kitchen, I'm just, and I, my memory, you know, I'm getting older, but check into three-phase electric. That might be a way to differentiate between commercial and not. Just a thought from those past years.
Counselor Henry?
My question about the commercial kitchen was that, I don't know, I think this definition is, is very long and drawn out, and I wonder how, did you run it by our planning department? I mean, are there any, is there anything in here that would not get along with our, with our codes and domes and that kind of stuff? Neighborhood business definitions? I, I don't know. I, I don't know how to say what I'm, what I'm trying to say, but it just seems like that's an awful lot of definition, and it could be a little simpler. Like maybe one sentence or two.
City Attorney?
Mayor, and, Counselor, I mean, all these points are well-taken. Let, let me, we're working on this, and so we will look in more places and consult, everyone we can consult, and maybe we can come back on third reading with two or three possible definitions, and you pick one. As I say, that's not a great answer, but we have been working on this. And I thought that there might be a way to go, go through the health inspection, you know, those regulations and statute. There was not a good way to do that. So, we will, the best I can say is we'll continue to work on this. So, it's, it's clear, and we'll try to give you a menu of choices.
I'll add, please, just specifically, you know, when you talk about safety shields and finger guards and exhaust fans over cooktops and automatic fire suppression systems controlled by sensors, maybe not every commercial kitchen has that.
Have to.
You have to.
Yeah.
And how do you know that?
It's a law.
What law, okay, so he's saying that, he's saying that it's a law. So, did you look at a law? What law are you talking about?
Okay, I don't, I do not want to get back and forth. Back and forth going.
Okay, so, but this is my point.
Okay, we have additional questions on the definition.
Are we looking at zoning? Are we looking at, what are, what are we looking at when we, when we talk about this?
Certainly getting the impression that counsel's not very comfortable with the commercial kitchen definition yet. City Attorney?
And, and I'll just do the mea culpa one more time. We are, we are working on it, we will give you more options, but I want to make sure I understand where counsel wants to go with this. We, we are taking a restrict, trying to find a restrictive definition of commercial kitchen, because as I understood it, counsel wanted, we wanted this to be a real place, serving real food, and so the children can be there until 8:00 PM. So, our definitions, we are always tending toward the more restrictive, that would try to eliminate the microwave on the, on the countertop. So, if, if you want us to be as restrictive, say so, but we felt the more restrictive was the side we would err on. Not that we've done it perfectly, but that was, that was our approach.
So, I want to make a comment to this, and that is that, so I'm not entirely convinced, really, that, that this A2 is necessary, because we're talking about establishments whose primary source of revenue is from the sale of alcohol, alcoholic and malt beverages. We're not talking about an establishment whose primary revenue is from food. Those, those establishments that really operate a restaurant, like, was it given to us an example before, who are not making their primary revenue from alcohol, they don't have those minors hours restrictions on them, that those minors can come in and have a meal at 10:00 at night under this code. We're really talking about those operations that are a bar, that you were trying to, we seem to be grasping at traws to find some idea, some excuse to get people to go in there until 8:00 PM, and, and that's where that commercial kitchen came in. So, I'm not really convinced that this is necessary. I think an easier definition of just saying minors aren't allowed in these establishments might serve the community better, but that's a personal opinion. I also want to throw out another, another, something to look in, is, instead, in trying to make the enforcement for our law enforcement officers easier, is there a categorical system that we could come up to that we could tag their licenses when they're issued to say, you're a, you're an A1 restaurant, or, you know, so you have a classification as a facility that gets their income from food, all right? You're an A2, so you get all your, you're saying that you get your primary source from alcohol, and therefore you fall under these restrictions. So, we're tagging them and having that discussion when they come in for a license, and we're not leaving it to the police officers in the field to try to figure out if they meet a commercial kitchen definition. I think that that might personally be an easier way to go about this. City Clerk?
Your Honor, to the first point, under A1, you have commercial kitchen in that one as well. So, we still do need to define that in that if you don't have A1 in there, your bar and grill licenses will not be able to have children in them. Neither will Applebee's. So, we do need to make sure that, that we don't lose sight that whether you take out commercial kitchen, whether you use a different term, that we still have some kind of definer in there, so that you have control over who that is. To your second point about tagging licenses, on the renewal process and on the issue process, through the documents that they provide to the city clerk's office, it will be determined whether or not they can have minors in their building. The police department will not be guessing on sight. They will have a list, they will know exactly who's allowed to have minors in it and who will not. So, don't worry about that. We will work closely together to make sure everybody's fully informed.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schuster?
It could be either way. That was my biggest question right there, is I know that Chili's is a bar and grill. Oh, I thought they were a bar and grill, they're full liquor? Restaurant. Okay, so theirs is proven, but Applebee's is full license, correct? So, unless we do something with this, Applebee's have to quit serving anyone under the age of 21 at 8:00, unless they show there's an amount of food sold. Correct? And she's shaking her head yes. So, that's, that's the one I want to make sure on.
Counselor Polikas?
I think that's the same point I was going to make, just because you have a full lic, you can run a restaurant under a full license, and that's our, that's our quandary, our dilemma right now.
Vice Mayor?
So, like, food, more than 50 percent food service annually, daily, weekly, monthly?
City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Pierce, I would, we would assume that we would run the same way that we do our current restaurant and bar and grill, where they have to, to state at renewal what their, what their gross food-wise, food sales were, what their gross alcohol sales, and the, give us the percentages, which is what they have to report right now on their license renewal form. So, we would take that information, and that's over the past 12 months of their license. So, you could have an ebb and flow throughout the year, but the, the end result over the last license year would have to meet that criteria.
Further discussion on this? Counselor Polikas?
Well, unfortunately, I think under the circumstances, somehow we need to define, just as we're trying to do, what is a restaurant? And kitchen is the best way to go about it. It may be, it may be more restrictive than, than visualized, but at least we have a standard that somebody can abide by, so that they're not being unfairly sectioned out of, of having a restaurant and allowing minors in it, is what it sounds to me like.
Chief Stalver?
Counsel, counsel, as I've looked at these, my, my entire concern throughout has been, can I enforce this thing?
Right.
I think we've got a lot of, a lot of places that, my problem with the one and the two under 09615 is that you got a, you got a number of places that shift their business model based on a time of day. Elmer's or Roxy's. Elmer's and Roxy's, to me, they're restaurants. If I'm in there with my family having a meal, I got to walk out at 8:00 because I'm over there. Now, with the breakdown of, of the serving area versus the serving building, now that whole building's there, and even in that, what was the bar area in Elmer's, you got seats not at the bar. So, now my kids can be at those seats close to the bar, but now do I got to leave at 8:00? Because their business model really shifts, and, and in fact, they, on their own volition, shift their processes to say, at 10:00, we're not having, you know, underage people anymore, you're going to be ID'd to get through the door. And they'll kick people out in order to make that entire area a bar, to where their food service goes way down, it might be appetizers and stuff, but no more full meals. Roxy's is even a bigger problem for me, because Roxy's, I think, is a restaurant, but to get into Roxy's, you can go two ways. You can go in through the door, or you can go in through the bar. Roxy's very much changes from a restaurant to a bar late at night, and I mean a bar. But, under the current restrictions, it's a restaurant commercial license, now my kids can be in the bar, 19 and 20-year-olds in that bar, not at the bar, but at the seats at the bar. Enforceability starts to break down. Roxy's doesn't do what Elmer's does. They don't say, we're going to turn into a bar and nobody comes in at a certain hour under the age of 21. I don't know what the serving times are for Roxy's, 10:00, 9:00, where you can be sitting in there having a meal, and it's, it's realistic to expect, especially during jubilee days or, you know, football games or something like that, that get done at 7:00 at night, and the families go down to Roxy's, they're not going to be done at 8:00, they're going to be done at 9:00, they're going to be done at 10:00, it could be done later if that restaurant decides to stay open later. What you do is, is what you're going to do, from my perspective, it has to be enforceable, and it has to be uniform. When I look at that commercial kitchen definition, they're going to be certified through code and through their licensing, and I'm not going to deal with it, because I don't, I'm not going to have officers going in the back of somewhere and making sure that they got this or this, or the appropriate number of people deliver food, and they got a full menu and everything else. I don't even, we don't even know what that looks like. You have a big challenge in front of you when you start to limit down or try to parse out, because you have so many different business models and different looks all around town. I don't think anybody, what I've heard, is nobody's concerned about the 10 or the 20-year-olds sitting at the tables inside what is now that fenced-off area inside of Applebee's. I agree, they shouldn't be at the bar, but that fenced-off area, what is now a fenced-off area in Applebee's, that changes its complexion late at night, and you got drinkers in there then, and they're not eating, they're stopping by Applebee's for drinks. They're meeting there on purpose, and that, that occurs all over the community. You've heard from Crowbar, and there's another perfect example, that turns into a bar late at night. But the kids now, can they, should they be in there? But the kids now, can they, should they be in there after 8:00? Is it 10:00? I don't know what that looks like. Is it 8:00, you can't serve food anymore, but the kids gotta go out when you, when they finish dinner? I don't know. So I just bring that up. In that one and two, I, I see challenges from an enforcement standpoint.
Thank you, Chief. I know the city attorney is still working on this section, city clerk is still working on this section. Any other comments from counsel on directions we'd like this to go? Counselor Henry?
I just, you know, I, I, I think I'm a little confused because of all the language, but I just know that I've heard from bartenders that they don't like it in a specific bar environment, they don't want to have to, after 8:00 or before 8:00 even, determine whether somebody is, if they're serving alcohol, they don't want to try to determine if you're 20 and 1/2, or if you're 21, and whether it's an hour or not. There's just saying, keep minors out of the bar. So, that's, that's what I've heard from bartenders. And so I don't know what, if that's our current, if this is the way it's written, or, or what? I don't understand.
City Clerk?
Yes, number one is going to be your bar and grills.
These are, are you talking about exceptions?
Your exceptions. So A1 is going to be your bar and grills, the, the places that you typically see families in already. That's the only way to be able to allow your bar and grills to have minors in there, that we've been able to come up with. Number two, you are looking at more of a bar situation, if their food sales do not go beyond their alcohol sales. That could be more of a bar thing. I don't know what, some of the places that have not had to report their percentages before, like a Roxy's, I don't know where they would land on that.
But you're saying that they have a commercial kitchen? So if a bar does, no, I'm just saying a bar, in particular, a bar.
Without a commercial kitchen?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
There is no exception for minors to be in a bar without a commercial kitchen?
Okay, good. All right.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I misunderstood your question.
Yeah, I, thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. The chief brings up an extremely valid point. You have a high school basketball game in the evening, gets done around 8:00. Now you're saying, hey, you can't go and have supper with mom and dad, even though you're a 16, 17-year-old, and you've won the game, and we want to go someplace nice and eat, and we've just took three-quarters of the restaurants off the board. They can't go to a Elmer Lovejoy's, a Roxy's. I think with the commercial kitchen, we're, we're going to have to probably put it up to the, to the establishment to do this, because if we say 8:00, let's say the game does get over at 7:00, by the time they get out of the dressing room and everything else and get down there, we've just told them, I'm sorry, your celebration dinner has to go out to the truck stop where they have no alcohol.
To be, to be clear, and maybe city clerk, you can clarify this, it would land on whether their primary source of revenue came from alcohol sales or food sales. So we wouldn't necessarily disqualify three-quarters of the restaurants unless three-quarters of the restaurants in town are getting their primary revenue source from alcohol. Just want to be clear on that. That would be the defining factor. Counselor Plakus?
I, I really appreciate what the chief said. I'd really like to hear what some of his recommendations are, both from a knowledge standpoint, from an experience standpoint, and from an enforcement standpoint. I'm beginning to wonder if maybe the chief, the clerk, and our city attorney can sit down and maybe work some of this out, and give us a more logical direction, because I'm, I'm kind of confused on what would, I'm really leery about trying to put amendment forward or pass something that, I'm not sure what the ramifications are, and I'm not the expert in this, and I don't have the experience. I would really appreciate getting more feedback from the chief, and from the city attorney, and from the clerk, together as a group, on this, on this particular item.
Vice Mayor?
So can I change the subject and maybe get one thing done, or no?
In just a minute. Do we have any other comments or direction to staff for this topic?
I, I have.
City Attorney?
One, one question.
You don't have to do a mea culpa anymore. Wait, we got that.
I'm happy to, but my, my question is, I want to make sure I have guidance, that you want to allow minors in establishments that make most of their money from alcohol. Well, because we're going to eliminate a lot of problems if, if that, that's, that is this issue with the commercial kitchen, A2. So that's a place that makes most of their money from alcohol, and we say kids can be in there until 8:00. I just want to make sure you want, you want that.
Is there anybody here on council that does want that to be the way the code is written?
So say that again?
It's just, I, I want to make sure that you want an A2.
Do you want to allow kids, or under 21s, in an establishment that gets their primary revenue from alcohol?
Until 8:00?
Until 8:00.
And it has a commercial kitchen?
Let's just ask, let's take the commercial kitchen out of it. Let's just ask the question, do you want under 21s in an establishment that makes primary revenue from alcohol?
No.
Until 8:00 P.M.?
No.
Is there anybody that's for that here?
No.
With the exception of packaged liquor stores.
Right, that's.
That's a different exception.
You're, you're right, counsel, that's a different exception.
I'm not entirely sure counsel wants A2, if that's.
That was my question.
That's the information we're getting, is that there's nobody that wants them in those establishments. Okay. All right. That's clear. All right.
Do you want to amend it to remove A2, or do you want us to do something with A2?
Does counsel wish to get further feedback, or do you want to amend it out?
I'll make an emote, I'll make a motion.
Counselor Henry?
I would move that we strike A2.
You need.
Oh, section, from section 5.09.615.
Okay. Second by Counselor Schuster. Any further discussion on the amendment? City Clerk, are you ready?
Uh-huh. Can we just read through that?
I believe the amendment is to remove section A2, or, under 5.09.615, removing A2.
5.09.
Striking it altogether.
Further discussion on that?
I, I just would like to point out that the, the statement is, whose primary source of revenue is from the sale of alcohol or malt beverages?
Anybody want further discussion on that? I know people are shuffling through paperwork. Counselor Plakus?
I would like to hear from the chief, if he has an opinion on this. If he doesn't have an opinion on it, I'm fine with it.
Chief?
Mayor and Counsel, Plakus, through this entire process, I've been trying to figure out how to, how to do this, and I don't, I keep then going back to examples. I hate to bring clubs back up again, but the Legion has a commercial kitchen, and they don't serve food on a regular basis unless they have events in there. So, but kids can be in that, kind of that bar area, but then they say after 8:00, they can't be there, and they can't approach the bar. It seems to work okay, and we don't have known violations of underage people consuming alcohol. Then, I was sitting back there and thought of Roxy's, because again, I'll go back, during the daytime, Roxy's makes all their money from food, but they shift that business model late in the night. Do we want our kids, because the bar's attached, kind of like it is at Applebee's, into the restaurant area, and you can sit in the bar and have a full meal at Roxy's in, in the bar area now, and now underage people can be in there. To me, what we're striving for, from an enforcement standpoint, is to keep our kids out of businesses that serve alcohol almost entirely. And I'll use the Buckhorn or Mingles as those examples, because even though, I don't, I've heard that they serve food at the Buckhorn, but I heard that that food is from an ex-business owner who donated them grills and hot dog turners and, and that sort of thing that they've set up in the back, and people can't pay for that, but their, their business is alcohol, sales. Mingles does sort of the same thing, you can get some little frozen pizzas and that sort of thing, but they're in it for alcohol. I don't know how you draw that line, quite honestly, except that, what I've said to the city clerk and to the city attorney in these discussions, excuse me, is that our, our license holders, without a doubt, without exceptions, are held to many, many standards that they must adhere to, or their license becomes in jeopardy. I know it's not a, I know it's not something that counsel, I want, or your advocates want, but if the Buckhorn is going to allow people in there, we'll bar-check them, we'll find the minors in there, and then when they come up for license renewal, that's not going to look good for them. So my thought is that the Buckhorn may not want to, to allow underage people in there at any given point in time. You know, the Cowboy may be your exception, because the Cowboy, right now, is doing special events permits, which are very specified, and those specifications are still in these, in this ordinance, where they can have their, their Wednesday night, country night, and their Thursday night, rock night, where they bring in bands or DJs and stuff, because they're, they're trying to cater to that 18 to 20-year-old crowd. We, we bar-checked them, and that just recently resulted in, in the suspension of that special events permit for a month, until they put in some special, some other additional checks and balances to make sure that that didn't happen. We'll see how that goes in the fall. But they were receptive to that. The state statute changes are what the state felt would, would fit across the, the entire state. And, and any, any adjustments that you guys consider, I think you just have to think about all of those different dynamics that we have at the local level, or that we could have at some point in time, too. So I think you do have a, a challenge, and Counselor Plakus, I don't have all the answers to come back. I'll be happy to stand up and, and indicate that I don't think something's enforceable. The, the commercial kitchen thing, I don't know how, I mean, my guys don't know what these vents and hoods and electrical outlets are even going to look at, and they're going to be digging behind boxes and everything to make the. So, I, I just, I think you have a challenge, and I'll, I'll be happy to stand up and tell you if I don't think it's enforceable.
I think that means he supports the amendment. I said, I think that means you support the amendment.
All right, further discussion on the amendment? Are we ready for roll call on this? City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson is absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney? Plakus?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
I'm going no.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is seven yeses and one no and one absent, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, that motion carries, so that will amend the changes, so we'll have A2. City Attorney?
I have another question, Mayor, if I may, on A1. If the, if, if we are saying that a, a business's primary source of revenue is from the sale of food, in other words, 51%, and I, maybe I'm asking the clerk, too, why do we need to define commercial kitchen? I mean, do we care if, and then, does, does counsel care if 51% of their sales is of food?
Do we care?
Do we care about commercial kitchen? In other words, I'm trying to get out of the commercial kitchen trap.
City Clerk, do you have any comments on that, before I go to counsel?
Yes, Your Honor, the commercial kitchen situation was left in, based on previous concerns from counsel, to help define those situations in the future. Did I say that without saying anything? I kind of didn't really say anything. So it's to give you a, a tool and something to hang your hat on when somebody wants to say they qualify, to make sure. It, it's up to you, you know, if you want to pull it out, that is counsel's will, you may pull that out, but that is the reason why I offered it to you.
Thoughts on A1? Should we have a little bit more discussion from our city attorney and city clerk, and on, on whether A1 and commercial kitchen aspect of that is needed? City Attorney?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy to talk about that privately with the clerk and sort that through, so I'm glad I asked the question.
Is that acceptable to counsel?
Yeah.
We'll let them talk about it and come, and come back? Okay, so, this might be 9:29.
First, we're, actually, we can continue till 10:00.
Right.
Since we've started.
Vice Mayor, you had something that you wanted to talk about?
This is a, this is a different subject, so are we okay?
Yeah, let's move on to a different subject.
I mean, same.
Same, same idea, but next item on the list, go for it.
So I would like to make an amendment. I so moved to remove the fees and put it in a resolution.
Second.
Separate resolution?
Yes.
Second by Counsel Henry? Discussion? We did discuss this a little bit two weeks ago, in regards to doing that. I suggest my counsel, counsel.
I think it would, it would just be easier to make changes, and it makes it more flexible, and we can easily assess the situation, and we won't have to go through three readings every time we want to change a fee.
City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counsel Henry, that's the intention through the discussions, was that if, if in your fee increases, if it comes that something is too high or not high enough, counsel has the ability to work with, with laramie and what works in laramie, and in just a little easier way. It can be done either way, and it's completely the will of counsel on that, but that was the thought.
Further discussion by counsel on this? I will make the comment that I'm in full support of this, in giving staff the flexibility, and also to make it easier for the city to update these on a regular basis. I'm a little shocked at the, the information that was provided us, to us in our packet, some of these fees haven't been updated since 1982. These fees are a year older than I am. Wow, wow, that's a, that's a long time, so. All right, so, roll call on the amendment to remove the fees to a resolution, please, City Clerk?
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson is absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Plakus?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries on that amendment, so we'll see a cleaned-up copy the next time we look at this, or maybe, hopefully, see a cleaned-up copy. So, City Clerk, please.
On the, Your Honor, on the bringing you a resolution, would you like to see the fees in that resolution as were proposed in attachment A, or do you have some adjustments you'd like to see, as long as we're going to bring it to you? Because it will come on third reading.
Right.
For not multiple.
One reading per resolution.
Exactly, but I'm going to bring it on the, whatever day we do third reading for this, I'll bring it on the same day, so you'll have only one day to look at it, so I want to make sure I bring you what you'd like.
So that's my next question to counsel, is, are there, is there additional, so first of all, do you want to open the discussion on fees at 9:35? And if so, do you want, I mean, do you want to talk about this tonight, or do you want to talk about this in two weeks?
I think we're going to have some differences of opinion as to where those fees are going to go. I would, I'm going to do the diplomatic or political answer. The clerk has made some recommendations, I think we should start from there, and adjust them at that time.
So as we've amended it out, we would only see the fees once on third reading, they would come as a separate resolution, and we could, we would have the entire discussion about what we approve on those fees on that resolution in one shot. Is everybody okay? Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. City clerk? That's the way we'll handle that.
Got it.
Okay. City clerk, city attorney, help me out. What else were we, what was, what else was major on this list? I'm scrolling through.
We may just make it to the.
Oh, so we need to talk about hours of operation still, or we'll have an amendment on third reading? Okay.
Your honor, the only other item you did not touch on tonight is the prohibition of gambling, just leaving in what's in current code. So, it just kind of depends on how counsel felt about that one, but really, you've touched pretty much everything else. We didn't really talk about the special malt beverages, that first item, and the fees for that one. That would be the other item.
Okay. So, I will ask counsel, do you want to open the discussion, or is discussion needed on the gambling piece? I think that was a question from me, Counselor Shumway.
Clarification, I didn't have any suggestions.
Okay. Counselor Henry?
So, will the section 5.08.680 special malt beverage permit be, will that not be on the, in the resolution, or will it remain in this ordinance?
City clerk?
That is up to counsel on how you would like to see that happen. We can pull it off separately. It currently isn't in that fee table, besides a range is what's in the fee table. These are set specifically by the size of the establishment, or the occupancy, I should say, in 5.08.680. You can certainly pull those out in resolution as well, if that's what you'd like to do.
Let me clarify, city attorney, as that is a fee, have we already done that with that amendment? Because we just said pull all the fees out into the resolution.
I think that can just be a clarification of what your intention.
If that's what the clerk heard, then that's clarification.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay, so right now, we'll assume that it's pulled out on the resolution.
Okay.
If that's not what counsel desires, then let's have that discussion. Okay. Dave, or Counselor Plakus, sorry.
Really interested in the chief's input on this again, but Mr. McCracken, when he was up here, talked about the logistics and the issues he can see now that the whole premises is considered, is considered a serving area. What do you do with people that are after hours after two o'clock? The way we have it here, they've got to leave. So, I, I mean, I'm not around at two o'clock, so I don't know how much of an issue it is. Right now, please.
Mayor and Counselor Plakus, and city clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, the revised ordinance indicates that, that sales stop at 0200.
Right.
All customers have to be out by 0230.
Right.
But employees may remain in there.
Right.
And that kind of covers that whole thing, that you can have the cleaners come in, you can have employees restock and clean, and they can be in there all night long, they can't be consuming alcohol. And occasionally, over the years, we've run into that issue, but we really don't have a problem with clearing out customers prior to 2:30.
Okay, he was suggesting that there's times at three o'clock in the morning, people are still waiting for a taxi or whatever, and he's not going to kick them out of the premises, is what I think his comment was. In other words, 2:30 is just not enough time, because it takes too long. And I, like I said, I don't have the experience of knowing how many people are hanging around waiting for taxis at 2:30 in the morning.
Mayor and Counselor Plakus, we really don't run into that problem. I mean, Safe Ride runs Night Owl, it's available all night long, they're running, you know, during the school year till three in the morning. Sometimes it takes them a little while to get there, but that's not an issue that we've really seen as a problem.
So, it's reasonable to have the bars vacated by 2:30 in the morning?
That's the way we, that's the code that we currently operate under.
Thank you.
Further discussion on that? Counselor Schuster?
I just got the question, because he is in a separate section of town. So, if Night Owl says, and I really appreciate what the university has done in that, they have really stepped forward and made it a lot safer, that if they say, well, we can't make it there till 2:45, are you guys going to be understanding about that, is what I'm saying, because I'm going to pick on Jubilee Days, and it's going to be going as late as they'll possibly let it go, and I'm sure that Safe Ride's going to be really, really busy in that stretch. And there might be some issues, and I just hope everybody's understanding, as long as they see, hey, they're not serving any alcohol, they're not kicking them out to where they're just staggering around on the street or trying to get their own vehicle. I just want it to work. That's my biggest thing. He doesn't have to answer on that, but I just, I just, I just hope there's understanding of why somebody's still in a building.
All right, so, city clerk, city attorney, have we missed any major topics that we discussed? I think I've got everything on my list that counsel wanted to discuss, because I'm wondering if we should actually go ahead and pass this on second reading tonight, or? Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion that counsel wants to have tonight before we go to a vote on second reading? We have one amendment coming forward.
Well, that'll be on the third reading.
Right. So, all right, city clerk, let's do roll call on this.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Plakus?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson, absent. Henry?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay. So, right now, the time is nine forty. I would need a motion to finish out the agenda items.
Well, we're at public comments, so we don't need to.
I believe we do have to do that, finish out the items, don't we? We've got public comments, work sessions, and executive session as well.
Executive can go on.
Okay.
I believe, am I?
Yep. Is that correct?
City attorney?
All right, then we'll go on to number seventeen, public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public that wants to comment? Seeing, we do. Forward. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Mayor, counsel, Ike Fredergill, Laramie Boomerang. I'm not sure where my employer stands with me commenting. I'm supposed to be here as a fly on the wall. But, while I may not be all of the councilor's favorite person, I do try to report fair about what happens here. And I don't want anybody to have any surprises when they pick up the paper Thursday. There is no way for me to report about what happened tonight without looking at the fact that alcohol, a legal substance, was restricted, and controlled substances were given a little bit more leeway. I don't know what that looks like on the page, but I know what my comment section looks like when I deal with these two subjects. So, I just want to be absolutely clear that that's what's going to be on the page Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item number eighteen, consideration of future council work sessions. Does anybody have any suggestions for future council work sessions right now? Is that a wave or a suggestion?
No, I just waved.
Okay.
Somebody waved at me.
Just a point of order.
Please.
And I'm not sure whether this is correct, or whether we've done it in the past this way, but at the end of our timeline, we do public comments. We adjourn to executive session, but I don't believe we do the work session comments, okay?
Fair enough. I will check in with the city attorney on that, because I think we've done it some different ways, and I'll have a clarification at the next meeting.
What's the exact question?
It's too late.
End with public comments.
How about you and I talk about it before the next meeting? We'll get it straightened out. All right, so then we will go to item number nineteen. Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. For Klaus Hansen, I'd like to adjourn to an executive session regarding litigation, state statutes, since it has a double S there, sixteen, or sixteen slash four slash four oh five exemption triple I.
Exception.
Exception triple I.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by counsel McKinney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Want a proposal? We are adjourned to executive session regarding litigation.
Mayor, I'm just telling you, this is the way we've done it.